All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order now. Good evening and welcome to the Brisbane City Council Meeting of October 30th, 2017. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Adoption of agenda?
Move adoption.
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oral communications number one. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Item A, Adopt Resolution 2017-58 to update the city's Conflict of Interest Code for designated positions.
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Old business, item A, Consider Adoption of Resolution 2017-50, Implementing General Plan Amendments to Comply with Housing Element Programs HB1A and HB1B and Adopting the Parkside at Brisbane Village Precise Plan. Okay. So tonight, we're gonna continue our discussion of the draft precise plan. We had the opportunity to have a lot of questions answered and a lot of public comment at the last meeting. So, we're gonna start off with public comment and, or excuse me, with a staff report, please.
I have one question.
Sure.
So Ingrid, I don't mind drinking out of the pitcher, but could I get a cup, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I think I took your count. Oh, no, there is one missing.
No, that's yours.
Okay.
I always wonder why one has ice and one doesn't.
So we can, can we, do we need to wait, or can we go on with the staff report?
We're ready.
Okay.
All right. So, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. So we won't spend too much time on the staff report tonight. We gave you a supplemental report with answers to various questions that were asked at the October 16th meeting. I'll just do a quick summary and note any changes. So we've given you a revised resolution with a corrected Exhibit C, the Land Use General Plan map, which shows the correct geographic boundary for the Parkside area. We also addressed a question regarding how the 16-unit senior housing project approval may or may not have impacted our arena. And we provided you with an excerpt from the Housing Element, so Table E3 of Appendix E, which gives a summary of the realistic development capacity we had projected for the entire district that site's in, with the punchline being that we didn't really cut our shortfall down significantly because the project was basically in line with the background projection we made for the whole district. The second question we provided answers to were whether or not the city could require residential projects to be for sale or rental. The city attorney was of the opinion, clarified his opinion, that we actually can't really do that through the zoning language. It's not part of the authority of the zoning ordinance when it comes to ownership types versus rental. Also regarding density bonuses, we provided a kind of cheat sheet of how the state law would apply to the Parkside plan, what types of increases in units you might see, given the basic projections per site. And basically emphasizing again that any project that doesn't comply with the density regulations would be subject to design review, even if it was a density bonus application. The other item was regarding community benefits, and so we provided kind of some background information on community benefits, the kind of economic drivers behind them, clarifying again that if, if the council's interested in developing a menu of desired benefits, that's certainly something you can direct us to move forward with in another planning effort. We also provided some information on the South City Downtown Specific Plan. So this is a plan adopted by their council in 2015 that had some aspirational language in it regarding requiring prevailing wage in exchange for some defined incentives. So we gave you some excerpts from that plan, both the planned language with a land use policy as well as zoning, that showed just how much more density they were willing to give in return for those defined community benefits. We also provided some background info on project stabilization agreements, which is the labor agreements that the city attorney had talked about last time, kind of how, how those policies might work, and again, kind of recommending if we go down that path, that we devote a separate planning process for that. We provided the visualizations that the ad hoc subcommittee saw for their walking tour. And we also provided some information on commercial and residential development impact fees, which would basically be fees assessed to new market rate residential and commercial development that were meant to be used for the development of affordable housing. And the last item we did was just bringing some background on how we reached out to the property owners for all properties in the Parkside plan area throughout the planning process. So, without getting too much more into detail, if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions on the supplemental report?
I just have one clarification. I thought I was in the understanding of that last meeting that the, at least I thought I heard four, three people say that they wanted to take out the four stories.
I didn't hear a vote, but certainly, just to clarify again, the plan as written only provides for three stories. The revision by the recommendation by the Planning Commission was to add the four stories. So all you would do is not accept that particular recommendation. But the plan originally as drafted was for three-story height limit.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. Any questions? Madison? Barry?
No questions.
Cliff?
You know, it's really more discussion items amongst yourselves.
Okay. Well, before we get to that, I did have one question. So, with respect to the four-foot, four-story height limit along Park Lane, I had asked staff just later this, earlier this afternoon about, I was thinking about how we could address that, and I noticed there was one property, I think it's 151 Park Lane, it's the one, so if you look at Park Lane, it's, maybe can we pull up a map of, that would show the Park Lane properties? I think my question would be easier to understand.
The furthest property west?
Yeah, the furthest property, it's, it's just as you go like up or north. It's occupied by DSS Plastic Group, which, and it's next to Bright Event Rental, so you probably all know where that is. So it's the one, it's right, it's at the end, but it isn't included in the Parkside plan. And my question is, if we were to include it, or, you know, maybe not at this point, but, you know, in our next adoption of the Housing Element, to look at creating a zoning overlay to include residential for that property? Right. So, because, and the reason I was thinking about it is because it's still, it's adjacent to all the area that we're looking at having the zoning overlay on, and the Crocker Park Trail cuts just north of there, and so there's a natural separation between that and the Purcell-Murray property. So my question was, if we were to include that in the housing overlay, would that then, by spreading out the residential and the associated parking, would that then allow us to have the three-story limit? Would it tip the numbers so that we would avoid the four stories?
Well, again, the four story is more of a design, sort of desire, more than a, than a requirement to meet either our density or our numbers. We're very confident that are the densities that have been prescribed within sort of the range of unit sizes, which provide some flexibility, that we can accommodate in a three-story format on the parcels that we already identified and were identified.
Okay.
And you can't always spread the density so much, because the state has a minimum density requirement, and a, also a height, you have to allow for three stories. So I don't believe that you would able to, be able to achieve the Planning Commission's goal of having tuck-under parking with two stories of residential above. I don't think that, that format lends itself, even if we reduce the densities, to that kind of format of development. And we're also not sure that the numbers would add up, because again, we'd be taking density off some of those parcels, but we have to add more density, we add more acreage, so we actually may end up increasing the yield of units within this planning area at this particular time, which we took as direction the council wasn't interested in. Our goal, our charge was to make our arena number, but not
Exceed it.
Great excess in advance of that.
Well, when we included, because the post office site wasn't originally in the plan, and then that was added in the last iteration, did that have any impact on increasing the numbers?
That was actually, because the original plan had some four-story components, so I was able to knock those four-story components down to a three-story max through the entire plan area. So that's, that was the driving that. So we're already at three, and we can't really go any lower at this particular stage.
And, sure.
The four stories came because the Planning Commission wants to do podium parking, so it just bumped it up a story. So it's easy to get rid of the fourth story by just going with what the ad hoc subcommittee suggested, which is just three stories with parking, just onsite parking and not necessarily podium parking.
But then, wouldn't that take up more space for parking and eliminate open space? Because I thought that, I, my understanding was that the reason for the podium parking was to allow for more open space and eliminate, you know, the need for parking around the buildings.
It was, but it was also based on an understanding that, from a feasibility standpoint, building only two stories of residential above a podium, no one will develop in that format.
I see. But three stories without podium would be economically feasible? Okay. Thank you. No other questions? So who would like to start us off?
You know, actually, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You know, just, so this stake density bonus sheet, so
He's speaking.
Phone on, Cliff?
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. That's better. So, so the senior housing project that the council just approved, that got the 20% density bonus because it was all senior housing?
Actually, no, because that zoning district, there's no density, maximum density within the zone, so there's no density cap. So, so no, they didn't need it. The only thing they got out of using the density bonus law was the, the concession the city had to grant them by law, but they, they didn't actually increase the density because the city has no density cap on
Is that a setback?
Yes.
Okay. So, so for Parkside, if a developer wanted to build a senior housing complex, and we've talked about this, you know, a certain amount of, of housing has to be, I guess, balanced. You can't just have all your affordable housing be for seniors. If there was a developer that wanted to build a senior-only housing development, they would be able to add 20% of additional units, and then how would that affect the formula that the state requires in regards to balancing out the affordability that's required?
I think, again, if this, if a developer chose to make that application, and I think there's less of an issue than the city mandating senior-only, that's a very, I think that was part of the conversation before this, but the city mandates senior-only. If there was a, either a private or nonprofit developer who wanted to propose senior housing, you know, I think the expectation, and we would make the argument with the state, that there must be a demand, they would not have, the city did not require that, it was, they did that at their own volition, and we should get full credit for, for that particular project.
Okay, good. No, thank you for that clarification, because I was always under the understanding that you were limited, but as long as it's not the city imposing, then it's, it's market-driven. Okay.
To follow up on Cliff's question for senior housing, at that point, the developer could reduce the parking requirements if it was designated as a senior facility, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. And, and so getting, so piggybacking on your, your question in regards to the parking, so the senior site that we just approved had .6 parking spaces per unit. So if we had a similar project, senior project, would that, could the developer impose those types of parking requirements? Because I, I saw the parking formula on one of the pages, and it was one space, that was the lowest, I didn't see anything lower than one.
Actually, for a senior, I think you can go down to half a unit, or half a space per unit, yes. And no provision for guest parking.
Sorry to tack on there. So yeah, we addressed that, if you look at page two of the cheat sheet, basically, so projects that are 100% affordable to low-income seniors or disabled residents can have lower parking ratios at half a space per unit if it's for seniors, and a third of a space if it's for disabled residents.
Okay, and that, and, okay, and this
They have to be 100% affordable.
Has to be 100% affordable.
The last clarification on that, if you're, just so we're very clear, why the developer of the San Bruno project couldn't use that ratio is because the state also sets a size threshold for a senior project, and it was too small to qualify as a state senior housing project, and it gets 35 units, that's, to, to be able to take the benefit of that reduced parking ratio, so their project was too small. So they were subject to the city's parking standard.
So there's a couple of things that were at play below 35 units, and, okay. Julia, you talked about design review for, if, if someone used the density bonus, then that would kick into play. Now, in regards to design review and minimum densities, I was under the assumption that, that if you use minimum densities to achieve your affordable housing, that then you could not implement design review?
That's correct. So, the minimum density that we're required to provide per state law to comply with our arena, those are accommodated for in the plan. So, we can still apply objective review standards that would apply to any project that are in the plan, to projects even if they are compliant with, with the densities. It's not a standard design review public hearing, such as what would normally be required for a design review, where it goes to commission and goes through public comment and that sort of thing. So, in Chapter Five, that administrative chapter of the plan, it outlines those two separate processes, basically, that would be required. If you have a compliant project that's hitting the minimum densities, it would be an administrative design review process. So the VA would basically, independently of our typical public hearing kind of process, look at the design guidelines, evaluate the project, let the developer know whether or not they're hitting those guidelines or not. So it, it's a, still a design review, it's just not our typical public hearing-style design review, unless they're kicking up the density, at which case it does go through our typical public hearing process.
Okay.
We're still precluded, though, I'll emphasize, and we do mention in the staff report, even if it's a project that exceeds the density and goes through our standard design review process, we can't use that process to, to limit the units that they're, they're, they are entitled to requesting those additional units. So we go through design review to make sure the design complies with the community standards, but we can't use that as a tool to chop, chip away at
Yeah. And, you know, and that whole thing of design review, not using it as a means to basically deny a project moving forward. You know, the design styles that are in, in the, in the plan, I mean, they, they look good, and, you know, I guess if there was, you know, certain, if a developer came along and, and their style was similar to what has been illustrated in this magazine, or in this, this packet thing here, I would, you know, I'd be satisfied with that. You know, I was in South San Francisco earlier today, and they're, they're just finishing up building some housing units that are on Mission Road near the South City Bard Station. Those things are just so ugly, right? And so, I mean, that's, that's the thing that, you know, that worries me, and I, but I feel like we, we have, you know, really good detail, and, and we've articulated, you know, a certain requirement, not, not a style, but, but a requirement, and I feel confident that, you know, that would, with whatever would come through the planning department, you know, you're going to, I don't know, I guess, represent the, the values of the community that I think the community has seen in, in this whole process. With that, yes, it is, you know, an administrative process, would the council at least see what those potential designs look like, or would, would you consult, say, with the housing subcommittee on that?
We could certainly, you know, anything's public information, once it's submitted, if the council's desire to, to have access to that information, it can be provided.
I, I think that would be good. At least it gives, I mean, we're not, you know, gonna have the hearing, but at least the council is aware
Yes.
So that we aren't surprised, you know, one day instructions happening, and I, you know
Yeah, we can build in a notification sort of requirement, I guess, if you want to put it. Or we can build it into the plan, either way.
Okay. All right. Yeah, the other stuff is, well, you know what, I do have one other question, sorry, Madam Mayor. So, in 2020, you know, Title 24 is gonna have the ZNE zero net emissions requirements for all residential. So here we are, it's, you know, almost the beginning of 2018. Whether or not a developer would, would act before the 2020 requirements are in place, if we were to impose something like that, and, and there are already residential developments in the county that are ZNE, I was at one last year in Daly City. If that was some, if that was a desire of the council, how would we propose that? Or could we?
Well, I think the, the question would be, and unfortunately, the city attorney's not here, would there be a basis to treat properties within Parkside differently from any other residential development in Brisbane? Certainly, the city could, when we amend in the regular updates of the building code cycles, like we did at the last go-round, we made a requirement for solar in certain, both commercial and residential. That's, that's not a state code requirement, it was a special exception. The city had to, well, we were able to use an economic study that another city had done in the county to justify this, and that it was, would be a cost benefit, it wouldn't be an imposition, cost imposition. So the city can always do that citywide through sort of code cycle amendments, in terms of imposing this requirement on the Parkside properties, independent, I think that's where the city attorney might need to weigh in. I'm not seeing a basis to treat these properties differently than you treat every other residential property in Brisbane, especially because part of what we're doing is meeting a low-mod housing requirement, and I don't know that puts the city in the best position if, when we roll this out to the state, and we've imposed requirements that arguably add cost to, what is, the goal is to have a low-mod income project area. So I think we want to be very careful about creating that as part of the baseline or the floor. From the community benefits standpoint, if that's something you wanted to, as a council, consider a community benefit in exchange for something, you know, that's probably a good place for it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I hear you. You know, that, that project that I, that I referred to in Daly City was a affordable housing project that was on Mission, Mission Street, it was a collaboration between the county, the city, and Mid-Penn. But, you know, you touched upon something that, that, you know, that, once we get into our discussion in regards to, you know, certain things that we would like to see, you know, describing them as aspirational things to consider, by positioning them in that way, the city can say, we'd like to see buildings be zero net emissions, or maybe we'd like to see projects incorporate, or demonstrate how they would incorporate the One Planet Ten Principles on sustainability. And that's something that we could put into the document. It's not, it's not binding, it's not, but it's just laying out, say, certain council wishes to be considered.
Yeah, I think that all comes in that idea of a community benefits package. Again, in the experience you see in Redwood City or South City, there's kind of another side to that equation, is typically to articulate to an interested development party what they might expect, what benefit they would receive in exchange for providing these community benefits. The idea of providing a laundry list of desired benefits is wonderful, but if, if there's not necessarily a carrot for a developer, well, if I do that, then what can I get out of the deal? That becomes, you know, another part of the equation, too.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, building on that question, so with respect to community benefits, so there's some, I guess, that are built into the plan, but there's others, you're saying, that can be more of the carrot and stick approach, like we'll have a menu of options, and that'll give us some leverage if the developer wants to, say, put increased density, or, you know, another, you know, whatever it is, you know, reduced parking requirement. So, that's something we would do, you know, once we approve the plan, and we would go through another process to come up with community benefits. Is that, how would that work?
I think that's probably worth a separate kind of process, because, you know, you may have different
Okay.
Opinions as to what values and what you'd consider a benefit, and more, more importantly, what kind of things are on the table for that, versus what things
Okay.
As a group, you're not interested in entertaining in exchange for benefits.
Okay. Thank you. So before we do get into discussions, there's a few people in the room, I just want to make sure we have a chance for some public comment. So is there anyone who'd like to speak to this item on the agenda? No? Okay. Great. So, who would like to start us off on the discussion?
Maybe our subcommittee, or ad hoc committee.
I'll start. I want to thank the staff for really giving us concise answers to some of the questions we were throwing around, and, and what would have, you know, the what-ifs that we were putting out there, and I appreciate And I appreciate the concise nature of that, and I also really appreciate the work that the Planning Commission did and their thoughts that went into the three-story versus the four-story. I don't really have any questions, but I do think that it's important to keep in mind that more than likely, um, a developer is gonna come in asking for more. And it is going to give us a chance to have some of the aspirational goals that the council's talked about. Um, a couple of the things that I think um are really important to me is that we keep it to a three-story and that we, you know, have that flexibility. We know that it's very possible that a developer's gonna come in and make that ask for um either reduced parking, increased density, or both. And so I want to keep our options as open as possible for um I shouldn't say design review because it's really, what I'm worried about is is aesthetics and blocking the interface between Crocker Trail, which is really important to us, and Quarry Road. And so I I'm happy to go along with what we have here and schedule another meeting for aspirational goals that may not apply to this project, although they may, but would apply to any project that we're looking at where our area of importance is, whether it's, you know, zero net energy or um, you know, increased um transportation or, you know, walking trails or recreational opportunities. I think it's it's really good that we've gotten this plan and other than the four-story recommendation with the Planning Commission, I'm happy to recommend it as it stands.
Okay, thank you. Madison?
Terry, is that a is that a motion?
I would make it a motion, but I think everybody should speak first before we do that.
Well, before Madison starts, I just wanted to clarify a couple of questions with you if I could.
Sure.
So um other than the four stories, uh, your suggestion taking the language out of that, right?
Yes.
And we're talking a couple, a couple of items here that refer to that. But there's also uh uh an item, this is on page A three of our exhibit.
I'm sorry, A three?
A three on the resolution that the Planning Commission is recommending uh to plant one shade tree per ten spaces in each parking lot. And they changed that ratio because of, I think, because of the uh I understood it right. Maybe, John, you can clarify that, but they changed that because of the podium parking?
Well, I think they just, in general, wanted more shade coverage of parking areas for reducing the heat island effect and whatnot.
Okay.
That is our city standard currently entitled fifteen also.
Would it affect the parking with ten shade? No?
Well, you never, you know, until you see a design of a parking lot, you can't really say if, you know, those cutouts will take a space or two. Normally, in a small lot, it won't, and if these are relatively small, you can fit them in. It's when you get a big lot and then you start lining trees up at the end, you end up taking a area that reduces parking yield. But I think on these kind of small lots, you could probably achieve it without a great bit of pain.
Okay, all right.
Madison?
Well, Terry, I couldn't have said it better myself. Yep, I'm in I'm in agreement. Um I'm pretty adamant against four stories. I I don't hear that being an ask from our community. In fact, I hear mostly the opposite. And, you know, one of the big drivers in Terry and I really being so passionate about working on this was when we saw four and five stories projected in the initial plan. And to us, that didn't make sense for that area. Um, and and we heard a lot of community input in with concerns about uh buildings that large. And so that's really what inspired me to try and figure out creative ways where we could still meet our density um and bring those down. And like Lori kind of touched on in conversation, that is why the post office, one of the reasons why the post office parcel was included. Um, other than that, I'm excited about the project. Happy to approve it as it was initially, you know, written without um that four-story addition. Uh, all the other things that I think the Planning Commission has suggested sound fine to me. To me, I don't know how good of a use of our time it is to have another session to go over all of the potential community benefits we would like to see from any development. You know, and I'm flexible in that. I just think that as we evolve as a city, our needs change. And so for us to take all this time to outline all the things that we want right now, we don't know what the situation may be five, ten, twenty years down the line when um a developer does want to develop and we're asking for things that are no longer relevant to our community, like maybe a parking garage. The transportation may change at that point and parking garage might not be something that we need, or it might be something we absolutely need. So I think it really should be under the purview of that existing council at that time to identify what is most needed in our community. And if not, I think we'll continuously have to meet to update our list of our wish list of of those items. And I just, I don't know if that all of that work is really necessary if we don't exactly. A- anyway, I'm getting off track, but that's how I feel about that. Um, otherwise, I'll keep it, keep it short and sweet.
So is that a second to Terry's motion?
That is a second.
Okay.
Just thought I'd ask.
We're moving along, don't worry. Clark? Why don't you go next?
Well, actually, I'd like to hear from the other half, the other subcommittee.
Well, we haven't been as active on it. I don't
Nah.
Think we've done that much. Why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, sure. Well, you know, uh, I'm glad that you acknowledged the work of the Planning Commission. They did do a great job. And um, you know, you guys did a great job as well, uh, bringing this, you know, to this this point. Yeah, the four-story thing is is not something I'm in favor of either. And you know, I'm glad that we're able to fulfill our obligations to the state by staying within the three um, the three stories. When we had the the project uh from the twenty-three club before us, you know, that that density was much greater than what we have here. You know, we're looking at seventy-two units per uh minimum density per acre as opposed to um twenty to twenty-four. So um the post office site, I know that you incorporated that into the overall strategy to to have um uh, you know, a a larger area to stay within the the three stories. But I I do have a question for 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 staff because I'll let you know, I mean, I I like the post office site. I I I would like to see it be, continue to be, uh, have a commercial component to it. And so um if we increased the density a little bit throughout the park lane site, or maybe even both, both areas. And then um the the post office site still stays as a two-story two-story residential and one-story commercial, could we still maintain the requirements from the state in regards to the housing element?
We're gonna have to do a little back of the envelope figuring here, so bear
Okay, so while you work on that, yeah, so um
Can I address that a little?
Sure.
So one of the reasonings besides being able to have a little less density to make it a little more palatable and fit in with the character of Brisbane, one of the reasons we did that also is that the trucks entering and the late night noise issue where the post office needs that rear entrance to function the way it is was one of the other driving forces so that we could also get room for the community garden benefit and for reduced truck and traffic impacts from a freight operation going on in that building. So that's one of the reasons that we incorporated that site. And it was a logical piece to continue it and have the residential have a certain flow to it.
And another, just to add on to that, too. So you're working like in a in a manner in which when you adjust one thing, it has other effects. So from what I understood from our consultant, because we we like played around with this so much, you wouldn't believe, like, we would come up with something and then and it's like, oh, well, if you want that, now it's four stories. Or if you want this, now this happens. And so what I gathered from the consultant, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when we looked at, you know, making things denser, then you reduce the size of the units. And there is like a threshold where I think at uh maybe like eleven hundred square feet, there's a certain threshold where developers have like a sweet spot in the size of the units that they want. So like, we wanted mostly all really tiny units if we could, like, we were really interested in seven hundred square feet units. And there would be more if it wasn't made very clear to us that to have that, those size of units, um, developers aren't aren't necessarily too ecstatic about that. And so what happens is if you want to make it denser then and you're not reducing your size of units, then you're going up in height. And so that was like one of the conundrums that we played around with, and that's why we needed kind of like every inch and needed that commercial component. I also thought, like, I read in the staff report that you gave us today, that mixed use in that area wasn't
Feasible.
Wasn't feasible. So would that apply to the um that parcel, or is that just talking about kind of the other parcels?
I think that that's sort of a market-wide condition, so it wouldn't be any different here. I would point out, too, that I think the other goal that the subcommittee had with some of their reworking was to provide a sort of a different product, like something a small unit-type product in that particular location that was a little different than the townhomes and the stacked units. So it's really not in a format as kind of envisioned. It wasn't really kind of a tall building. It was more individual units. So it really wasn't you couldn't easily shoehorn a sort of a ground floor retail component without sort of re-envisioning how that whole sort of sub-district works and
Right. And I think from the plans, I counted it last time, it seemed like there were almost like nine separate little buildings. So when you do that, you obviously you can't, like, somebody had suggested, a public comment suggested, well, why don't we just use the existing building and put the units on top? And the way that it's planned and the way that it's written, there are so many small little buildings together to really give that feeling of open space. I mean, we talked about, when we think about open space in this development, there is a considerable amount of open space and community areas. And so you have to have, you have to have buildings somewhere, too. And so um, that's why I think like with when we talk about podium parking also, I mean, we really thought about contributing a lot to open space, having places where people could be outside and enjoy themselves with also not having these big, big blocks of buildings. So it's like, you do one thing, and you have one desired outcome, but then it results in something else that maybe you don't desire as much, too. So it's a balancing act.
So the the post office, you know, typically, post offices are in a towns downtown. I mean, that's just part of most cities, right? And so um where do you think that the post office should be located? I mean, there's not very many places in our downtown for a post office. So I mean, is that something you 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 thought about when you decided to make this an all residential?
When when we
Property.
When when I envisioned or when I've talked about it, um the post office as it's cited now is its its needs are changing because we aren't a mail center anymore. It's not being sorted in Brisbane the same way it was five years ago. And the post office isn't being utilized the same way it was five years ago by the postal service. And many towns have very small um sort of storefront post offices, and that's what a lot of the San Francisco post offices are, where the core properties have gotten more expensive. Unless you have a historic post office, they really aren't being saved, just like the historic banks. They're all going to the modern same look of everything else. And if a post office would be um desirable, which I love having it, it could be in the economic um development area, in the in the shopping center area.
Or even on visitation, if it's
Or on visitation if it's so desired. But, you know, the post office is something that even the U S post office isn't sure what they're going to be in five years. So to plan around it for our core downtown is was secondary, and as long as, you know, that building has a lease to the post office, it's gonna continue to operate as such. And and so um my big determination on that corner is because it's sort of the crossroads of Brisbane entering our downtown, I wanted it to still have that low-impact look um of stepped homes or business, you know, buildings that are homes of one nature or another. And and I really looked at our senior center and how dense it was, our senior housing project, how dense it is. And do I drive by and say, ew, or am I happy with how it ended up looking? And it's something that I could drive by and live with and think, for what it is, we did a really good job, and it's got, you know, entryways that are not street-side concrete blocks, although, you know, part of it has the concrete stucco look. It doesn't have the look of a prison. And that's what I was really trying to get is away from entering town and having the look of a prison, which I see a lot of stuff in Daly City and South City that looks like that to me. And I wouldn't, I I would not be happy if that's what came out of Parkside, and I'm hoping that that's not what comes out, although you know, some of the more modern styles sort of give me that feeling. And so I'm, you know, I've always been more of liking the craftsman look that we ended up with at the senior housing project. But again, we won't have a decision, an ability to say what style it's gonna be unless there's concessions made to a developer. And that's where our design review and our ability to say we want it to be a little greener, a little more set back, a little bit, whatever, in exchange for whatever considerations that developer wants.
That they may want. Okay, so um, yeah, you know, I mean, you're right, you know, with the post office side, I mean, whatever the the owner of the property decides who they want to lease it to, that's what they're gonna do. I mean, it doesn't have to be the post office.
There's a relocation provision, I believe, as well.
Yeah, I know. It it is stated in there. And so um, there's a desire to have it
Oh, absolutely.
Located, so um
And it's not, yeah, I mean, in Melbury, I don't know if you have been down there, they had an old big post office that relocated to one of the side streets to more of a storefront property a couple of years back. And, you know, so I think the movement is towards these small
Yeah.
In Burlingame, too.
You know, and really, it is
One San Bruno?
The responsibility of the post, the postal service, you know, if they still want to have a presence in our town to to find um the location, it's not the city's responsibility. You know, Terry, you know, you brought up the, you know, the thing about the our our senior um housing um site. And I I like that all the little nooks and crannies, and it's not just a blocky thing and um you know, and I think both of you did a really good job with, you know, articulating that to our consultant, and we don't have just a a row of of like one building all And we don't have just a, a row of, of like one building all along Park Lane. You know, it's broken up into different, you know, sometimes it's horizontal, sometimes it's vertical. Um, you can see through it. I, you know, I, I, I really liked that. Um, that density is higher, you know, is this. So, I mean, and, and I know you, you're thinking of, you know, having smaller units. Um, but it sounds like you're open to higher density as long as we stay within the three stories. And that you, being able to use that as a means to acquire, uh, community benefits if, if it, if it pencils out for both parties.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, my goal is to have, overall is, is to have smaller units. You know, the smaller I think that we can get the units, the better it is really for everybody. Um, and so I'm a hundred percent in support of that. They'd all be seven hundred square feet if, if I could have my way. The only thing though, I think that, that like I'm talking about balancing act, you have to figure out where the parking is going to go, the denser you get. If you're still staying in three, three stories, sure, you might be able to make them all smaller. But on the ground, where will you put the parking? So that's not something we have to figure out today. But I could see that being kind of a conundrum that then you have to also address.
Well, one of the things that, that we looked as at was that we wanted a general idea of how this would fit and how it would look and where the parking would be and where there'd be corridors. And that people wouldn't feel like they were living right on top of each other. But when it comes to adding, let's say, the twenty percent density bonus that they would get with either, um, senior or with low, you know, perpetual low income, that's where the developer is going to come in and say, well, we can do it this way. What do you think? They're going to come in and try to fit the pieces onto the building block and come up with a plan that meets our requirements and also meets their desire for saleability. And I know that in San Francisco where rents are really high, people are living in three, five, seven hundred square feet, and it's not considered substandard. I mean, my home's eight hundred and twenty feet, and I don't feel like I'm living in a substandard place. But I've got huge amounts of land around me. So it's, it's not like the neighbor is right at the edge of my eight hundred square feet. Um, so it's a little bit different when you're in the residential areas. But we didn't want to put people in that little tiny box and, and force them into those cells. But we'll see. Maybe the, that's where the desire will be when a developer comes in.
Yeah. And then, um, you know, Madison, you talked about, uh, not really having the need to have another meeting or community engagement process in regards to public benefits. Um, one of the things that, that was brought up the last, uh, meeting was, uh, community benefit program. Uh, you know, I talked to staff about how, you know, maybe right now is not the right time to require these benefits. Um, because, you know, maybe the, you know, you, you impose these community benefits and it just becomes, you know, a non-starter for the, for the property owner. But, uh, you know, I, I do feel though that it's important for the council to maybe put out some things that are important to us. Like, you know, in, in one of the first renditions that, that the two of you put together was, you know, having a community garden. And, and so, um, you know, I, I want to see if the council is okay with, you know, providing some aspirational goals for, uh, future potential public benefit.
Well, when I said that I didn't think, I don't mind having those goals and setting them soon. I don't think it needs to be tied into this project today. And so I didn't want to get into the, the weeds of what all of our aspirational goals were to try to incorporate into this plan. I wanted to get on with this and move forward. And that community goals should be represented in all of our downtown core developments and aspirational wants. So I'd rather put it there than tonight's agenda.
I can respond to that. With all due respect, I think one of the key reasons for doing this plan is to outline our community benefits because on economic development on the subcommittee, we went out and we, we went to Redwood City, we met with their planning staff, we took a tour. We did the same, um, we met with South San Francisco. And what we heard through those conversations with, um, with their staff was that in Redwood City, their plan came together without reaching out to the community and defining those community benefits. And so a lot of people after the fact, once the development started, felt like they didn't get enough out of it. Um, and they, all they saw was the traffic and, you know, the giant high rises going up throughout downtown Redwood City. And so in contrast, um, several, you know, many years later, when South San Francisco went through the process, they sort of were boasting about the fact that, you know, like in contrast to Redwood City, they said they, they really made sure that it, that the community benefits got, that they got included and defined upfront in their downtown precise plan.
But they were
So that was one of the goals with this document.
But they were, but they were giving a whole bunch of extra density where we're not, I'm not willing to do that yet. And for me, I would think that some of the plans for the, um, commercial portion could include some of those community benefits, but we don't have anything, we didn't focus on that half of the plan.
Right.
We focused on the immediate need for the housing element of it. When originally we had envisioned, you know, one cohesive change of use for both sides of the project. And I certainly felt that it was too big to chomp off for, for what I thought as the immediate need for housing. And, um, I was, you know, excited to see what the subcommittee on the shopping center side of it did. And then we didn't have a whole lot of content or planning or, you know, on that half that I see in the plan. I mean, we really devoted to the housing portion. And I think some of those community benefits could come out of the, the commercial side of it and/or change some of the commercial portion to be housing down the road if that's where more community benefits could be garnered.
Sure. So, I mean, yes, we haven't included as much density as South San Francisco, but we have, you know, by, by doing the, the residential overlay, you know, that can be seen, you know, as beneficial to a developer, you know, for under the right market conditions. It, it gives them, it gives them some, you know, leeway to, to move forward with projects that, and both without this plan, they wouldn't be able to. So, you know, granted, it's not, you know, we're, it's not written into the plan in the way that it is in South San Francisco. But I do think there would be some benefit to going through a process of identifying community benefits. And they can be aspirational, you know, but I wouldn't want to go, I wouldn't want to be in a point, you know, several years down the road where a developer comes in and says, I want this, and I, you know, I want increased density, and I want that, and I want to move forward with the project. And, you know, at that point, we, it would be good to have something at least as a starting point of discussions to say,
Are you talking about tonight?
No, no, not tonight.
Okay.
A separate process.
I want to clarify.
I'm happy with a separate process to identify those things.
Sure, sure. And, you know, as to the, um, part that Cliff and I worked on on economic development, you know, I was hoping that we would have a bigger discussion too. But from what, and maybe staff can comment on this, you know, the, the economics of, you know, knocking down the shopping center and, and starting fresh, you know, which is what sort of this plan envisions, that's not financially feasible for a developer to do like right now, today. So that conversation really didn't come to fruition because of the financial feasibility.
Yes, that's correct. I mean, the, the, the planning that might stimulate that redevelopment of that shopping center probably involves a higher level of development intensity, whether it's more square footage or more height or mixed use, um, that it didn't seem like anyone was, well, wasn't necessary to meet these particular planning goals through the RENA process. Um, you know, was, we didn't know it until we did the economic work, you know, the idea that the, the market wasn't really going to support sort of a remodel. So I think it was time well spent to go through that exercise to know what kind of the parameters were. Um, but you're right, it was basically an aspirational sort of vision for how these areas might interface. But I think practically speaking, unless the market changes dramatically, that redevelopment would have to be part of an intensification that this council or a future council would have to buy off on.
Yeah, you know, um, you know, Laurie is right. I mean, what, what you see in that commercial representation is totally unrealistic, you know, and I actually kind of got pretty, you know, uptight about the direction it was going, um, because it didn't seem realistic. Uh, but it was more of, well, you know, what, what do we think the public will, will want to, to take on? And, um, you know, doing just the bare minimum of requiring housing, um, to meet our, our, um, our RENA requirement seems like that was as much as what the community and, and maybe perhaps all of you, you know, would be willing to take on. So, um, and so I put in one of my, my little things here to, to you, um, would you be willing to, um, put into the document that the council would consider? Um, some of the things that John had just mentioned, you know, where, um, so maybe a little bit greater density or some mixed use. Um, it is not, it's nothing that's binding, but it, it at least puts out the message to the, um, uh, you know, to the market that we would be interested in, um, entertaining some kind of revisioning of that site. I mean, when you just go around Old County Road and look through the trees and see that vacant lot, that looks awful. Um, you got that other site and there's just a warehouse, the trucks coming in and out. That doesn't look very attractive. Um, and, you know, there isn't that incentive for the folks that own the village to do anything, like maybe redo their building so that they have a, a better, um, access to, to Bay Shore. So, um, again, how does the council feel about putting in some non-binding language that, that says, hey, you know, we're interested in, in, um, seeing what the market might bear?
Well, Cliff, if I, if I may, uh, Madam Mayor, um, I think we should come back and revisit it at some point in time, you know, uh, um, the future council or whatever, you know, whoever's here, because Laurie's definitely leaving. But, um, I think, um, the future economic development subcommittee should work with the property owners and see what it is that they really want, what would make sense to them, you know? And then come back to the community again at some point in time and revise it. There's nothing that says we can't revise the whole thing. I mean, you know, that, you know, right now we're, we're doing it for a reason and it's going to certainly increase some property values. But that doesn't mean that, you know, the property owners are going to sell their property right away or say, I want to develop this with this, what you got. You know what I mean? Come in with something different, you know? And, and that's, you know, that's just the way it is. I mean, we, we started this process to do the zoning and say, okay, let's, let's see what we want in the future. And we started with the, uh, Urban Land Institute. Remember how all this is morphed together? So it's kind of been a work in progress for years. And, and so it doesn't mean this is set in stone. So I, I agree that, you know, but the methodology would be that, you know, it comes from the economic development subcommittee to work with the property owners to say, okay, this is what we have, probably not economically feasible. What, what would it take for you to make something economically feasible? And then work that way and then bring it back to the community, do another visioning thing and, and see where it goes. But, you know, tonight, we need to kind of move forward
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying. No, that, that
And I, I agree that, uh, we should come back and, you know, look at community benefits, but at, at a separate, at a separate time. And I think staff outlined it very well in their report. Uh, you know, listening to the dialogue, you know, that I had to take a trip down Memory Lane with the post office, that the post office used to be right next to Midtown. And the library was where the hardware store is right next to where the teen center was and that, that building, that was the library. And so in nineteen sixty-six, they built the post office there off of Old County in Visitation, right? And it was a nice, nice brick building. And the library moved where the post office was before it is the current location across the street. And then when we wanted to open up Park Lane here, we got the post office to move to where they are currently, tore the post office that was built in sixty-six, tore that down and then punched this road through. It connects to Central Brisbane to the park. Uh, so I'm listening to you guys and now all these old tapes are playing in my head, you know, how this all worked. And so I'm not concerned about relocation of a post office per se, because I, I think, uh, you know, whatever their business model is, I know at one point, Terry, I forget what the term is you use, but, uh, this post office was heavily used, especially by Crocker Park here. And so, you know, it was, uh, it had a lot of, a lot of activity. And, and that may or may not come back. It probably sounds like that their business model is changing now. Um, and I'm sure that it is with all the different delivery companies that have come in about. So I, I'm not worried about where, necessarily where that would go, because it would always find a place. Because people, people love the post office. And we are building a brand new library. And, you know, we're going to have a library, a, a empty spot. You know, of course, you know, we, we got a lot of community groups that, you know, would utilize that also. Uh, but if you're talking about the size of a post office, you can go back where it was back in nineteen sixty-six before it moved right next to Midtown. There's, I mean, if you're looking at if it's, you know, a mom and pop post office, but, you know, I, I think one visi, one, uh, San Bruno Avenue, it's been vacant since that's been built, that'd be a nice spot for a post office. I mean, you know, but this isn't about the post office, of course, but I started thinking about all this stuff, listening to your conversations. So anyway, uh,
Okay.
Just to kind of go further, I, I guess I'll just step it further where I'm at. Um, I, I'm willing to support the motion by Terry and seconded by Madison. Uh, I just had one question about in your motion that, uh, another one that, uh, said, uh, third stories will be set back five feet from the wall plane of the second and first stories. Is that, that was a planning commission recommendation. This is on page
I'm assuming that they mean stepped in.
Yeah.
So that there's some articulation to the building so that we don't have the prison wall. And staff could correct me if
That's true, but it makes the unit smaller too. So, I mean,
Smaller is fine with me.
Okay. All right. I'm just wanting to make sure if that was in your motion, that you're okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm
I, I still have, uh, some questions
Okay, sure.
For staff. So, um, in regards to the economic analysis that was done, um, based upon the, and I'm just talking about the residential component of, of Parkside, um, what type of increase in value based upon the densities that exist? Well, what are we looking at from current value as trade commercial to this, uh, potential housing development?
Well, since there's no, and again, back when we do these more robust community benefit programs like Redwood City and South City, which again is a program, and they actually implement it on a project by project basis, you really get to the point of having a pro forma, um, that gets into the specifics of what, what value is being created. Um, the short answer is the economic analysis we had done was more qualitative, uh, at a broader scale. And basically the conclusion was that the, the three story, um, was residential product was marginally marginally feasible and that the townhomes were slightly more marketable. But these was not considered, these densities was not considered, and heights was not considered a significant windfall of value-
That's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. Okay, because, you know, you know, the rationale from the ad hoc committee is that, you know, the community benefits potentially would come later if a developer brought forth, you know, a request. So say if it was a senior project and they got the 20% addition, there wouldn't be any requirement on our end to make any changes, there'd be design review, right? But, you know, there isn't any thing that, any leverage we could apply for community benefit.
You can't exact anything for a density bonus project, correct.
All right, so if we implemented some, say, lower level community benefits, and one of the things we talked about was the, I don't know, it was with you, John, but with Clay, you know, having that pathway to Cory Road and then to the pool or-
Cliff, let me, are you trying to get this done tonight?
You know what?
No, no, I'm asking, are you-
Yeah, I know, I am, Clay, I mean, Clark, and I already said I was going to do it. You know, I want to understand the economics behind this, you're okay, maybe that isn't what, you know, is in your head. But what I want to make sure is that if we're going to give, and, you know, let me just finish, because you're questioning me. If we're going to give an increase in value, if we're looking at change in this area, then we need to understand that potentially there could be some community benefits. They range in feasibility, and so I'm trying to get at, are there some low-level ones that we could put into the plan that then maybe we as a council are okay with? Because maybe, Clark, just maybe, the developer might, or the property owners might say, you know what, I can still make this work, and so I'm going to move forward with this. And then, you know, as Laurie had mentioned with Redwood City, that is something that they are kicking themselves in the rear about, because they did not apply any community benefits when they moved forward with that specific plan further downtown. So that's what I'm trying to get at, if that's okay with you.
I hear what you're saying, but what I'm, but what I'm hearing is two people say they want to do something tonight, and I'm hearing three people say, let's look at it later.
You know, and I'm listening to what everyone's saying too, and that they don't want to have that, that meeting right away, and maybe one of these days we'll do it. You know, you talked about how we've had these different engagements and when you look at it, then 10 years goes by, right? So if that's going to be the case, then I want to investigate to see if there are a couple of, you know, smaller things that we could get into this plan that then, you know, and then move it and then pass it.
I believe it was answered though at the last meeting when we did bring up like how many more community benefits we could roll into this package that are required, and it was my understanding that staff said, you already have a community garden, you already have a couple of other things that are in this. Like, I think you mentioned three overall, that that's kind of maxed out on what-
Well, you know, and right now, I'm getting this clarification on that.
Sure, so there's the community garden, I don't know what the acreage, there's a specified acreage. There's the trail connection, and then there was the third trail connection that the planning commission added up to the, to the school facility. So you have three, well, we onsite, kind of community amenity, community benefits that were embedded into the plan. So that's part of the baseline in terms of any development, we'll achieve those particular benefits. If you have additional items you want, that's, you know, we're getting back to this question of value, and again, those Redwood City comparisons are very interesting, but we're orders of magnitude-
Yes, no, it's different, absolutely.
... in terms of scale, so the idea of what is right size there and what we're going to be able to extract is two different worlds.
So you, so you stand by that, like, the existing community benefits that are rolled in the plan are essentially maxed out in terms of what you can expect, and anything beyond that would be as a result of like a density bonus or something?
We feel it's appropriate, the package that went forward to the planning commission was appropriate, and was included in the plan was appropriate. Obviously, the council, you can always change that, but that's your prerogative.
Okay.
Sorry if I could tag, so, and another thing to think about too is when the ad hoc subcommittee was talking about the actual realistic footprint of development, those site-specific benefits, the garden, the trail, those are incorporated into MIG's analysis of, okay, given this now buildable area with a garden being donated with this trail, here's how we can accommodate the required units within the desired envelope. So they did incorporate those benefits as baselines into the plan when they said, can we actually make this happen? So yes, Councilmember Davis, you're spot on.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, anything else, Phil?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so I guess the biggest question was the four stories. So I heard three council members now say they are opposed to four stories, is that your view as well? Okay, so we're all in agreement, and I had concerns about that as well. And when I looked at the pictures, it didn't look as bad as I thought it would, but that was looking down, like, you know, I think if you're on the street level, you know, if you look right, you see the existing, I guess, maybe one or two-story commercial sites, and I think if you looked left and then saw four stories, it would be imbalanced.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm happy to, you know, take that out of the, out of the plan and keep it with what was originally recommended. And yeah, I just wanted to express my gratefulness for, you know, the whole community, the planning commission, Madison and Terry, you know, you really did a lot of work and it shows, you know, I think those are direct community benefits, that the layout of the residential is something that is really in line with our community, and it's something that we can all feel proud of about, and when it, you know, if it does get built, I think it will really be woven into the fabric of our residential, our existing residential section. So with that, there's a motion, right, and a second?
We could just kind of reiterate, the motion is to approve Resolution 2017-50, removing the four stories.
Removing the recommendation from the planning commission for four-story tucked under housing.
And any, there will be a number of references that will change that relate to the four stories, that'll all be captured in the final version of the plan.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstained?
Thank you guys for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations, our first specific plan. Moving on, staff reports, city managers' report on upcoming activities.
You have a meeting on Thursday of this week, there is one additional staff report you'll receive in your closed session items, and I promise you it will be a short staff report, and I'll get that out to you in tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
And on November 8th, there's going to be the flag raising, or the November 9th, there'll be flag raising?
Thursday.
November 9th at 8:00 AM.
At 8:00 AM.
At the community-
Friday's a holiday for-
Right.
And there will be something in the, the school Thursday reports?
Yes.
Well, no, but the reports usually go out on Thursdays, so-
I talked to, I talked to the superintendent and he was going to, he was going to make sure all the teachers knew that and would announce it in the school.
Okay, so it'll go out probably on this Thursday's report, because it's for next Thursday.
I'll check with him again.
Okay, great, thank you. Mayor Council Matters, countywide assignments, subcommittee reports, anything?
Nothing since Thursday.
Yeah, hasn't been that long, okay. And in B, written communications. So we've received written correspondence on non-baylands related matters from Belen, Sierra and Maeve Johnston from San Mateo County Health Policy and Planning Program, as well as Dana Dilworth. And moving on to oral communications, is there anyone who'd like to speak? There's nobody in the audience?
The ghosts.
And I'll take a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you.